Okay, good evening everybody. It's 6:45 so I'd like to welcome you to our meeting. It's March 14th. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve our prior minutes for the February 22 regular town board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to open the public hearing for our local law to be numbered of 2016 entitled, "A Local Law Repealing Chapter 125-61 of the Town of Rhinebeck Code." May I have a second?
Second.
This is to repeal the green building code. We will be voting on it at our next meeting. And want to talk about it?
Yeah. This, they'll repeal Part 61, which is the green energy provisions of the code. That chapter provides that new construction, both residential and commercial, has to comply with certain LEED standards. I think it was silver at that time, or some other standard that the planning board can come up with. We had a seminar of local builders and architects and an expert on the LEEDs code. What came out of that was the realization that this would add substantially to building costs. In addition, under this LEEDs code, there has to be an inspector to ensure that the construction has a certain score. There's very few inspectors in this area, which will also add to the difficulty and expense of construction. In the meantime, and the cost would be about $4,000 or $5,000 more for a project, for single-family house than for commercial. In the meantime, the New York Energy Code for residential has been updated, and I'm informed that it is now more energy efficient than it was before. In addition, they're working on a rewrite of the commercial energy code, and that should be coming out soon. Our personnel are really not equipped to handle a different set of standards than the New York Energy Code, which they take courses in. The green building standards, I'm informed that at the time the zoning law was adopted, something was, this provision was put in as a placeholder, and it was to be effective three years after enactment of the code, I'm sorry, the zoning law, which was at the end of 2009. At the three-year point, we have a six-month moratorium, so it could study it further. And we've had two successive one-year moratorium, during which, as I say, the New York State Building Code has been upgraded. It's really time to do something about it, because it's just hanging around on the hooks, and we can't continue to have a moratorium on information. So that is the background of opposing that we can repeal that section of the zoning code. For people up to date as to where we are.
Also, I know that we have heard back from the Department of Planning in the county. We haven't heard back yet from the Conservation Advisory Board or the Planning Board. We will, and we're going to adjourn this until our next meeting on March 28th, when we can vote on it if we'd like to. So it's available for the public to look at, comment on. And I think, is there any more comments or discussions?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a couple of announcements.
On the public, is there anybody who wants to comment?
Yes. Well, I'm a very practicing building engineer. I would suggest to the board that better than 50% of the buildings and jobs I work on today seek to exceed the New York State Energy Code standards.
Residential buildings?
Residential and commercial. In fact, I would say more so residential now. So I would encourage the board to think about replacements for that. It's hard to tell homeowners they have to do more than the state energy code allows, but it's really not about LEEDs, it's about good construction. So I don't have a quick answer for you, but there are many experts in this community who build homes that far exceed the energy code minimum requirements.
Thank you. Any other comments? Couple of announcements. Saturday, March 19th, is the town annual acorn at the rec park at 10:00 a.m. So bring your kids, come. The town hall will be closed for, on Friday, March 25th. It's a floating personal day, which is also Good Friday. We will be having a special town board meeting on Thursday, March 17th, from 5:00 to 7:00. It's a joint town board meeting with the planning board, the zoning board, Conservation Advisory Board. It's to look at a proposed amendment to the town code that was put together by the zoning task force. The zoning task force is comprised of myself, Melanie Moore, the chair of the planning board, Scott Bergen, the chair of the zoning board of appeals, our zoning administrator, our land use attorney, and our town planner. And what we've done is gone through our town zoning code, and I think we have about 64 points that we're fixing. Most of it is not substantive. It is, there are clarifications of terms and square footage agreements. There are two bigger issues. One is for generators, and it has to do with accessory buildings. And the accessory building that is not up to 60 square feet, we're handily permitting differently to make it easier for people to put a generator and accept in a high-density area, like the neighborhood infill overlay or the historic hamlet in Rhine Cliff. Will still need a site plan, but all other areas won't. So it's on the town website, people can look at it, people can comment. We'll be having a joint meeting, and there'll be more discussion about it. Our yearly landfill closure monitoring was completed and submitted to the DEC, and the DEC transfer station inspection is in compliance. That's a good thing. Also, our summer rec brochures on our website at rhinebeck-ny.gov. Does anybody else have any other announcements?
We'll be opening the landfill for LEEDs and brush the last Saturday beginning in April, so it's the end of April.
For how many Saturdays? Just one?
No, it's every Saturday till the end of November or for snowfall.
Thank you. Anybody else? Are there any committee or liaison reports?
The Fort Law Housing Committee is meeting with political consultants, and they are headed toward the direction of recommending to the town board that somebody be hired to help them with their plans.
Great. Anybody else? I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2016-074. Our preliminary accounts payable, abstracts vouchers, 296 through 292, 69 checks totaling May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I would like to make a motion for Resolution 2016-075 for our capital projects abstract, 2 checks totaling $1,114.50. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2016-076 for the reinstallation of the bulkhead habitat enhancement devices to the Rhine Cliff bulkhead. May I have a second?
Second.
Dan Miller contacted us. He is with the DEC, and they had these up last year to collect data on fish and migration and fish habitat. There are little boxes that are attached to our bulkhead. The data was not sufficient enough to have a clear study, so he's asked us for additional time, which I support. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Yeah, there's no expense to the town that doesn't interfere with the use of the docks.
No, and it gives us good information about how the river's doing. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-077, hiring for the summer recreation program. May I have a motion?
I will.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Alan, any?
Well, these are the people we want to hire for the summer to be counselors and the arts and crafts director and the assistant camp director.
Any?
With the salaries.
Okay.
Is this the same as last year, more, less?
Where's the allowance?
Minimum wage.
Nine dollars.
All prices are the same, but when it comes to the next one, that's what it changes.
This is per our budget. This is what we've budgeted. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-078, an appointment to the Committee of Aging. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-079, I'll make a motion for the appointment of Mark Fleischhauer to the Thompson Mazzarella Park Committee. May I have a second?
Second.
Mark is representing the school board. We have a prescription of who can serve on the park committee, and the school board has a member, and we want to thank him for attending. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-080, compensation method for swim team potions. May I have a motion?
Move.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion, Alice? You want to take us through this or Alan?
Yeah, basically, we funded $6,000 for the head coach, assistant head coach, and two junior coaches, if you will. And this is, we were going to pay them by the hour, but the head coach wanted to do it on a salary basis, split the $6,000 between the four positions, which is what's on the The other thing we did was to waive pool fees for these four people, but they're not working as head coaches and coaches. And basically, they'll be able to give swim lessons separately if they rip their asses and if they desire it.
So it's a nice form of a compensation package that does not cost us more money?
Yeah, it costs us, exactly.
It's a good idea. Who came up with that?
It's a great idea.
They have credits.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you, Alice. Is there any discussion?
How does this work? Because I gather we also give swim lessons, and I think our revenue is over $10,000 of last year. So is this competition for us? Can you get, Alice, again, the president?
There are children on the swim team that need help with different strokes, flip turns and such, so this would be more of the coaches assisting the children in that. We want to build a strong swim team. We used to have a very strong one, and by allowing, sometimes the hours allotted that we have practice in the water does not give ample time to privately work. There would be more hours for those.
So these are private lessons?
Yeah, this would be, and there's not many of them, but there are some people that would like to have a little bit more assistance in things like flip turns and stroke development.
When do we give swim lessons?
We give swim lessons between the hours of 11:00 and 12:30. And we give levels one to five under the American River Plus certification. A lot of these children will already pass that level, they just need a little tweaking.
So there's a fee for that that goes to the town? Does that overwork?
Is it a fee for the swim lessons?
Yeah.
The swim lessons that we give between 11:00 and 12:30? Yes.
And if we go to this fixed amount, will people still bunch times?
Yes, their hours will be accounted for. Yes.
And in theory, this, did we have these four people before?
No, the head coach is who I asked for, Naina Batali. She's also put in a lot of time being a volunteer, being an official. When you're on swim team, it's like six weeks of intense parental volunteering. She just put in a lot of effort, and the swim team board felt that she was the perfect person to take this over.
She did everything last year herself?
We have never hired her as the employee.
Oh, so there were no private lessons last year?
No.
Oh, so this is...
Well, the private lessons, sometimes the guards will do it, not on their time, but sometimes there, she would be at the pool, and she would do this on her own, just helping. And then I think by offering this for a head coach, it strengthens the swim team.
Oh, she's the coach of the swim team?
That's what I had just, yes.
That's what this position is?
That's what this position is.
So I don't think it competes with the swim lessons that are earlier in the day, because this is advanced swimmers, and the other lessons are for beginners.
Like I said, this is just tweaking and getting a fine tune.
And do we have an expectation of how many hours that these four people will work?
Yes, we do, and I have that written down, which I can give to you for what, because the junior coaches would only be coaching the smaller kids for one hour, and then they would be in the water, because they too are competitive swimmers.
So we'll be able to figure out as the end of the season whether we pay it to a more ten-hourly basis?
Absolutely. But it is all within the budget. You have allotted $6,000 for the swim team coaches, and it was broken up even between four of them to make that work.
It's a way that we see of strengthening the swim team, giving people...
Yes.
Yeah, within our budget.
Yep.
Thank you, Alice. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-081 for the purchase of woodships, diving boards, and containers. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I have a couple items of new business. I don't know if anybody else does. Just to let you guys know, I'll be getting this to you before our last meeting, but it's my intention to close some of the capital funds projects, of projects that have been completed. And I'll talk to all of you of any of your specific projects. But capital funds, project funds are opened for specific projects, and once these projects are completed, they should be closed, and the money should be returned to the fund from which it came. And we have a lot of funds lingering here, some with $200 or $300. And not only being messy in our accounting, it's also time-consuming to have, you know, a cent of interest accounted for every month. I want to clean it up, so I'll be contacting you, and I'll put a resolution together, and I hope that you'll support me in doing this at our next meeting. And that's just a heads up. Second is that I received a petition from a resident of the Rhine Beck town, the Hiley Road neighbors, which I passed on to all of you. Did you all receive a copy? So I thought we could talk about it, because I'll write to the neighbors here. I also invited the village liaison for this department, Gary, Gary Bassett's here, hi There's a petition from, I'll read it. "We, the undersigned petition, the town of Rhine Beck to deny municipal jurisdiction to the village board of parcels 27178." There are three parcels here that are all in Hiley. They're where the water storage tower is. "The claimed municipality jurisdiction requires an intermunicipal agreement between the town of Rhine Beck and the village of Rhine Beck. Such an IMA does not exist. In addition, the village board must comply with all ordinances imposed by the town of Rhine Beck." So I did speak to Warren about this. He does not think we need an IMA for this. This is land that the village owns in the town for a utility, and the residents are, the second petition is a protest for the use of 20 green goats to mow, eat, and maintain the landscaping around the water reservoir on Hiley. The village board has brought in green goats to do some maintenance. There's some steep slopes, and there's a lot of old vegetation. This is a green way of getting rid of it before they do, you know, brush hogging or anything else. When the village board contacted me, I did ask that they contact all the residents up there. I spoke to our zoning administrator about this. There is nothing in our code that prohibits this. Our code does regulate the permanent placement of farm animals in the town, but not temporary placement like this. So if we want to discuss it, I don't know if we want to hear from Gary, I don't know if you want to discuss supporting green goats, not supporting green goats, but I will answer the residents of these two petitions if anybody has any other input.
And they're used on other places in the town as well, because Woltersheim uses goats too sometimes.
Yeah, the green goats. Not, this is village property in the town, and this is a petition from town residents that they weren't, that the village is not in compliance, and that the village is breaking our zoning. As far as I can find, they are not breaking our zoning, and...
Is there reason why you're discutant about the goats?
Is anybody here from this petition? Oh, hi. Would you like to address us?
My name's Enrique Gorrido. I am the resident, I'm a 28-year owner of two Hiley Road and Rhine Beck, New York. I recently have been trying to get the village to be more responsive, or at least, at least listen to the owners on Hiley Road. They've chosen to ignore them, so there was supposed to be a trial of the green goats back last summer. We got one day notice before the green goats were brought in. We were not asked about our opinion. They just made the decision to bring them in and to run them. They were supposed to mow the brush that had interlived itself in the, you know, in the lark fence. That never happened. So they basically ran an experiment without even notifying the owners of the green bird. Now, the owners have deed restrictions that prohibit the use of any kind of domestic animals in the Hiley Road development. The, I did go back to the clerk's office, Dutchess County clerk's office, to look at the deeds. There are no restrictions to their deeds, but there are a lot of restrictions on the owners.
Yes. There are no deed restrictions on these three parcels.
Right.
It predates the deed restrictions of the train subdivision.
That is not true. There is this perception that the water tank did significantly pre-exist the Violet Hill subdivision. What was bought by, and I did talk to Marie Teresa Crane, who was the owner, sold it to the village. There was an agreement, a verbal agreement, that nothing would exceed the height of the trees that were planted for that division. That's not the case. So she has no recollection that they were going to put a cement reservoir on top of the pool that they originally had. The pool is there, it's in the, it's in the formal map, but the tank itself is not in the formal map of the village.
Okay, well, does that have to do with this petition? The petition here is for the village not notifying you, and for them not adhering to our town zoning.
Okay, so let me, let me make sure that you understand our perception. That the village is claiming they have municipality jurisdiction, they can do anything. They're already talking about putting a water tower on that, on the, on the water tank. They're talking about doing a sludge extract out of the, out of the water tank, again, without any kind of public comment, or even notifying us. It just happened that in the last meeting, it was brought up that the long-term planning session was starting to think about future needs. So if you look at, the petition was written in such a way that we're trying to get the town, or excuse me, the village, to be responsible. We don't have a vote in the village.
No.
Right? So they're claiming municipality jurisdiction for the parcel and the use of that property. The problem is, there is no agreement between the town and the village. So they are a homeowner. As a homeowner, right, they have to abide by the town ordinances and legislation. Well, they don't. They think they're independent of the town. I brought the, there are several violations, and I will be giving Rob Evangelista the violation data. Rob Evangelista, with his own important mission. There are probably going to be five violations that they've done, really, really, without representation, without comment on that tank. They are in violation of the permanent structure setback. They have 10 feet of the pump station to the boundary line, which your regulations say 15 feet, a minimum of 15 feet. So they're in violation, and they choose to ignore that. They do not contain that water tank. If you go to the water tank today, you'll find there's algae and that's on the water tank. When I moved in in 1988, that tank was peeled from paint. It took a long time to be able to, to get them to paint that building, and now they've let it deteriorate again. Also, they tried to put a cell tower on top of that tank, again without representation, again by, by their definition, by municipal jurisdiction. They can do whatever they want to that property, and that's got to stop, right? So what I, what we're asking as part of their thing is, one, they need to listen, and they're not. They need to act responsibly as good neighbor, and they're not. The second time on the municipal jurisdiction, I'm asking for, for the, for the town to impose its governing rights to the tower, and not allow the village to mandate changes on those two parcels. Yes, we agree, but it should, since it does exceed, again, I want to make sure that you understand that those, that big water tank structure did not pre-exist the Violet Hill subdivision.
So it was the pool that pre-existed?
The pool pre-existed. The tank was put there in the beginning part of 1988, when the, when the, when Nir Tadra Avrahani, the developer of the community of the subdivision, actually wasn't even told that they were building what was originally to be a steel structure that morphed itself into that current cement water tank. Again, the village took unitarily decision to build this... Again, the village took unitarily decision to build these structures. If you look, if I went back and asked for any documentation from the Dutchess County Clerk, and there are none. I asked for building permit to build that structure, and there are none. There's nothing there, except for their municipal jurisdiction to confirm that those two pieces of property under, you also know that they're applying, they're going to impose an increase in the highlands that are on Hiley Road, as your note suggested.
Well, that doesn't mean that we're going to accept an increased charge.
Well, again, they're imposing their decision-making on the town. So, what I'm saying is that that has to stop. The town has to become the governing municipality in the town of Rhinebeck. And if they are just simple landowner, they should be treated as much as we are treated in that regard.
Okay. I think we understand. Thank you.
Just a question. The goats, what is the problem with the goats?
The goats, the trial, were left there for three weeks. And they do, do they smell? There's supposed to be a tree barrier around the whole structure. Near Tadrani, put 100 trees that have died. What has happened is now, when the goats are there in the tent, there's a temporary tent that was put up, which also is a violation of our jurisdiction. We can't put the tent on the premises, but they stink, they smell, they smell, and there are noise throughout the whole night. And we tried to show them what 20 goats sound like. And again, they said that in the two hours that they went up there to see them, they needed to hear the goats.
Our zoning administrator, I did send him up to look at it. I agree, you know, the village called me and to let me know that they were bringing the goats up, and I said that you guys needed to be notified. So, you may not have representation in the village, but you do have the town board, and we will represent you and figure out what's going on.
And that's what the authority, in fact, really tried to do, right? I mean, there has to be a stop to the way they're treating the owners of Violet Hill. We are paying a lot of taxes for our houses on that road. And we are getting very little cooperation from the village because, quite frankly, we don't have a voting right. We don't, we can't...
But you have us, and we will represent you. We'll work it out with them. I understand your concerns about the goats. We could talk about this. I think, you know, they're smelly, they're also green, there's no fuel, it's not, you know, machines going. It's an easy way to clean out the vegetation on the steep slopes.
As far as I know, this brush hog that they claim, I've never seen them doing...
Right. I think we have a village board member here, so I'll let him address. Gary, did you want to?
Hi.
Hi, Gary.
So, hi, I'm Gary Bassett. I am a village trustee. And yes, last year, in the end of the year before, we tried a trial experiment to bring some goats up to the Hiley Road reservoir. The purpose of that was, it turned into a trial because we wanted to make, see if it would work. And we tried to be good citizens as a village board and to reach out to every member, every resident on Hiley Hill. We were not able to directly talk to everybody, but we did leave messages with everybody on every phone, you know, in terms of what we were attempting to do. So, we brought goats up, we did the trial, they were there for approximately three weeks, as was suggested. They did a good job. Our intent is to have a way to start cleaning up the reservoir area. It has been neglected. I admit that it has been neglected. We have tried several ways, several mechanisms of which we want to clean it up. In the past few years, it's been using one of the local landscapers to commit and mow, right? And it's been mowed once, probably twice, but it's not an effective job at cleaning up and making it look good for the residents. And that's really all we're going to mark. We really want it to look back like it was. And this is step one in terms of trying to clean up all the brush. The equipment that was used before couldn't do the trimming around it, couldn't do the trimming around the fences, and it was still not a very representable place if I lived there. The goats will clean up everything. They will clean up the brush around the fence, they'll clean up all the grass, right? And that is the start. The next step is to start to address the trees. So, it's really a step process. We want to make the place presentable.
So, the village is committed to cleaning it up, replacing the trees, painting it?
Well, it's step by step. We want to first try to trim the trees up, make them shape them, get them back up. There's a lot of dead limbs, remove the dead limbs after we've done the area cleaned up. Let me just describe the scope of the goats, right? So, the scope is, mid-May, there will be approximately 20 goats brought up there. They will be there for approximately two, maybe two to three weeks again. At that time, they will leave. And there'll be maybe three goats left for the duration of the summer and early fall to perform maintenance while we're there. That's the extent. There'll be three goats there for predominant period of the time, not 20, okay? The 20 will be there for a short time, just to kind of get it started so the remaining three goats can do the maintenance. Are they noisy? No, they're not noisy, right? We've been up there several times during the experiment last year. The only noise they make is if you walk up to the fence, they want to come up and greet you, say hello, and then they're going to go on about their business because they want to eat grass. That's really all they want to do, right? Do they smell? No, right? The amount of goats that are up there over that amount of property, at most times, isn't even noticeable that they're there, right? So, we think it's an ecological way to approach cleaning up the reservoir in terms of what we were trying to do, and it's going to be a presentant end result that's going to look favorable to everybody.
Thank you.
Is the village paying minimum wage to the goats?
It's prevailing wage.
It's prevailing because of the union goats.
It's $75 an hour for goats.
The question I have...
No, it was gabs.
One more thing, to make sure we know that the, there is a perception that goats do smell, and non-neutered goats do smell, but all of these goats are neutered, so that problem is eliminated.
Gary, the other question I have is, the homeowner said that you have lots of plans for construction up there. And if you're not prepared to answer, that's fine, but does the village take the position that it's not subject to the town zoning law and that...
I don't think so, and I'm not aware of any plans for any new construction. I'd also like to address the concept of the sludge removal, because I think there's some confusion there.
That's at the other plant, Danny.
The sludge removal is really addressed to our lagoon down on Lock Duck Road, which is part of our water treatment facility. It is not directed at anything up there. There is no sludge that we're even...
I was going to say, if there's sludge here, we're in bigger trouble than what we think. If there's sludge in the water tower, there's bigger trouble than what we think.
So, the sludge removal is for a normal process of cleaning up.
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk to our town attorney and find out about the necessity of an IMA, the claim that the village needs to adhere to our laws. I'll address that. I'll write back to the homeowners. And, you know, we should keep them, it's always, I find notice in writing and beforehand, this is how I notice all of our residents, whatever's going on is best, and I, you know, like to be kept on the loop on it, so I can...
And in addition, yes, we are also sending down a letter. If it hasn't gone out already, to have the residents...
If you could just copy me on that.
This is the first time we ever got the letter.
I asked them to write. Well, okay, so it's a good start. It's a good start.
Yeah. So, and we also have a public comment session coming up on the 24th.
Okay. If you could copy on the letter, Gary, that would be great. I'll get a copy from the village, from the village clerk, Mr. Garida. Thanks. We'll have more communication with the residents, see if we can move to getting this done. I will check out with our attorney the other issues. Joe, do you want to take this over, since you're planning or doing zoning? Do you want me to follow through with it?
Yeah.
Sure, I will. Okay, I'll keep you in the loop. Yep. Any other discussion or comment on this? Closing of the capital plans, funds. Thank you for coming, Gary, Mr. Garida, thank you. And we'll continue to keep you in the loop. Anybody else have any new business? We have a discussion item tonight. We, I've called, thank you all for coming, a workshop. This is a sort of, so, you know, the town board, it's for the park, the Thompson Mazzarella Park Committee, and Bob Belsworth and Sally are here. The town board can only work in public, and there's discussion going on about where we are with the park development, what our next steps are. There's a lot of concern from the Rhinebeck Soccer League about fields and about fields being developed outside of the timeline that we accepted and was proposed in our master plan. So, I thought that this would be a good time to discuss all of this publicly, to make sure that we're all on the same page and we know where we are and where we want to go. Sally, you want to, or Bob, you want to take this, Sally, and bring us up to date?
Yeah, I'm fine, thank you. Well, I think the important thing is to really get a sense of the amount of construction that went on and where we are in terms of completion of phase one. As you know, a new roadway was put in, underground, and all of the telecommunication lines, an eight-inch water main, and this is all underground that went from 308 Longwood Road, whatever you want to call that, access on Major State Road to the rear of the property. And actually, it bypasses the area that had been designated for future fields. And it takes us to the back of the property where there's to be a restroom pavilion. We also, as you've noticed, there have been trees that have been planted, thanks to Rotary, who paid for the trees, but also volunteered themselves, the families, and the interact club at the high school, where we had over 40 people working on Sunday planting the trees. The lighting is alongside of the road that takes us down to the area where the pool is. We are in the midst of building the stone walls that are at the entrance, and because of the change in weather, it was impossible to finish. We actually, there were three portions of stone walls that were put in. One, there were two walls at the entrance. We stopped the construction of one of those walls because we did need to close off the library access point, and we felt that that was more of a priority in terms of safety to get that work done. So, without beginning work, the weather seems to have been cooperating, and we're getting started on the final stone wall at the entrance. The signage, I've been talking to the sign company, and they're preparing drafts of what will be used at the entrance and the area that, the directional signs of library. Also, during that time, we had a pathway that was developed from the library down to the pool, and there was a kiosk that was constructed by volunteers. All of the materials were donated by Williams Lumber, and we are very pleased with the results because it took a lot of volunteers to really construct that. It was designed by Bob Wills, and he also spent a lot of time with his family putting together a lot of the materials that have come to be used. I think I hit on all of the activity that went on. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, now we're at a point where we have to make sure that we have the money for the restroom pavilion, because the restroom pavilion was part of phase one. And there are funding requests that were out for that. There is hopefully funding coming from the state that will help with that. We're also talking to the Frost Foundation, and hopefully, actually, there is a conditional approval from the county of extending that grant if we have 80% of the funding in place. So, we're hoping that that's something that will, you know, construction starts soon with the weather is turning for us, and we'll be able to complete that. The trails, thanks to the Frost Fund, who contributed $1,000 to trails, and I should say that part of the trail plan are the sidewalks that come down from the road and the path from the library. We also have worked on trails over the years, a lot of the mow trails around the property. What we are planning is a trail from 308 along the stone wall to the area close to where the kiosk is. There will be signage on the kiosk, a lot of the signage, most of the signage is being donated by Time Signs in Kingston. And Paul is a resident of Rhinebeck, and he is contributing most of that, not all of that. So, that's all part of phase one. As we look at phase two, where we have had engineering work done and plans created and have been to the planning board, but do not have final approval for the phase two, which includes a roadway with parking and soccer field, baseball field, and part of the great lawn. And that is the area, I think, where many of the people here tonight are here to discuss that. The park committee really recognizes this as an important part of the park to have the fields developed. And, you know, I think the main issue is, how do we fulfill that aspect of the development of the park and still maintain the integrity of all of the planning and engineering work that has been done? So, I think that's what really has to be discussed tonight. Because I think we really all want the same thing. In the end, we want to develop a park that addresses the needs of the diversity that we have in the community, which includes all of the fields, tennis courts, the swimming pool...
Community garden.
The community garden that we have, just wonderful open space that people all ages can enjoy and an incredible trail network. So...
Sally, I have a couple of questions. Are you finished?
Yeah, that's a better...
A couple of questions. For phase one with the signs, I invited the library, community garden, I invited people from all over the community, and of course, anyone can always attend and speak up. But I know the signs that's going on the front wall will be for the library and the park, and then there'll be an additional sign for, the old library sign will go back up, correct?
Yes. There will be signs on both stone walls that will be for the park and the star library. And then, as you move down the roadway, at the area where you have the turnoff for the library, there will be a directional sign there that tells people where the library is and where the pool and the tennis courts and the fields are.
When do we think we'll have them? Sometime...
I've talked to Paul, and I tell him that spring is coming, and we really are looking for an installation, at least a directional sign at this time. And of course, the sign on the stone walls can't be installed until they're completed. At that time, there will also be lighting that's at the front, at the stone wall, so people can better...
See the signs.
...at the entrance. I should say that the lighting that's down the road is, all of that is connected to the restroom. the restroom. It would have cost us significant dollars to hook up that lighting on a temporary basis, and the decision was to wait. We had hoped that the restroom pavilion would be developed soon.
Can we talk about the pavilion for a minute? I'm looking at the letter that we sent to Ann Saylor, who's the community development administrator at the county department of planning, and we've very, they've been gracious to the county department of planning to extend our ADA CD BG grant one more time. And this, the funding, I just want to talk about the funding. We have, it's a $500,000 budget for the pavilion, and the budget that I'm looking at is the $100,000 from the community bought grant, there's $65,000 from Winnicke.
I should explain that that was not Winnicke Land Trust money, it was money contributed to Winnicke for the trails at the Thompson-Mazarella Park. The pavilion is really a, pardon?
Center.
Well, okay, center point where the trails meet, and there will be a map there that identifies the entire trail network, and so that money is going towards that effort.
We also have requested $160,000 from the state. I'm not, is this?
Senator Susie Serena.
But where's the money coming from? Is it a state fund, or is it former member money, or?
Well, they don't, they don't use the term member money, so I'm not sure. All I know is the request was made, that Senator Serena agreed to the $160,000. It's going through finance, and I think we're waiting for the state budget to be approved. Whether or not the governor gets it done on time, I don't know, but that's been the holdup.
And then we have another bit of money that we're looking for, another $100,000 from the Frost Family Memorial Fund, and then we're looking at some of the contingency money that we have left over from Phase One to be applied.
Correct.
So I guess that there's a sort of gas and clutch, a gas pedal and clutch thing going on here, because the county wants us to make sure we have our funding in place so that they can give us this, their $100,000, and we have a deadline, so we'll just keep up on that and...
And there's still a couple of unfinished items, possibly unfinished items with the park.
Alan, you want to take us?
Yeah, okay, so, the easy one is, we've heard this before, from the village wants us to put a meter pit in at the road, and the meter pit would require excavation of solid rock, and it's been estimated it would cost $60,000 to put a meter in there. My understanding is the purpose of the meter would be to detect leaks, and given the accuracy of water meters, it wouldn't detect much less than a couple hundred gallons of leak, whereas if we did a pressure test, it doesn't leak, it's brand new pipe. A pressure test is a matter of $300. We did one every year, we could detect a one gallon leak, whereas we do the meter pit looking at something like $60,000 to do the order.
So is that something we're trying to negotiate with the village?
Well, it's something I'm trying, we're trying to avoid, so, so far as we're still in the process, is that right, Carrie?
I think there's still discussions to be held, yes.
Okay, we haven't resolved that yet, but that's hanging over our heads. The second thing is, what, you, why don't you sit down?
Okay.
Thanks, Sally.
Thank you. I didn't mean for her to sit down, because I didn't want her necessarily, I wanted her to rest.
I'm fine.
I'm trying to be considerate. The other thing is, when the, the, the other part of the project that you didn't mention is all the drainage, so there's a number of pipes that drain the fields that all merge down at the lower field below the tennis courts. Those, there are catch bases down there, drainage and the like, with clean out manholes and so on. That was all supposed to be at grade.
You mean just to the south of the pavilion, south of the pool and, and west of the playground?
Yes.
The lower field where we do the Easter?
Yes, between the playground and the, and the tennis courts and pool, yeah. And in any case, when they tried to excavate, to put those catch bases and such in, they discovered that all the debris from the James Way demolition was there, apparently was used as fill years ago, and so it was almost impervious. So the bottom line is, all those, all that material is now above grade, and what's happened is, what used to be a very useful field is now at two levels. The level where the drainage all is, which is about six or seven or eight feet above the original level, so the field kind of steps up. And the issue with that is that the grade between the two levels is too steep, and we think it'd be dangerous for children. The Board of Health, which inspects the park for the use, for its use as a camp, says we gotta fix it. So the fix will generally be a combination of a small fence probably in one part, and some additional fill to have the grade be less steep.
And Alice will keep her eye on it to make sure that...
What we're gonna have would be Bob and I, and Alice and the Board of Health guy will meet sometime in the next few days.
I will be calling the Board of Health tomorrow.
And we'll figure out, we'll figure out what we gotta do.
And then he can give his recommendations of the children's safety.
And also, you, you have, you know what you need, the field is a field that you need, because there's shade there, the kids hang out there, so you'll be able to, yeah. Bob, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just to say something in regards to that area. Aaron Pettage from Weston and Samson went down there, I'm Bob Ellsworth, by the way, went down there to look at the area. He has written a letter that I think he copied you on, also with us and Alan, to Roars Construction as to that area needs to be fixed. We have withheld money from Roars for that purpose, and they are aware that they're gonna have to come back and do some maintenance on that area to bring it up to a standard that can be used. So that's been addressed by the engineers and to Roars.
Is this fix, will this fix, fix our problem to have the field be useful for the campers too, or is it, is it, does it not fill that scope?
He know, Aaron knows that it needs to be usable by children, so the fix he recommended was to bring, you know, level things up with dirt over top of the manholes, et cetera, grading the one end of the thing. The far end, which he and I agreed that that's always gonna erode because there's drainage over there, so the best possible thing would be to put a fence there, that would be the easiest solution.
You mean on the, on the west side, you mean?
Yeah, towards the neighbor.
West.
And the, the reason for that is the fact that, number one, if you put fill or try to grade it, it's gonna erode away.
Yeah, it's too steep.
And we're just gonna be wasting money there, so. The other end can be done, but this, that end is...
Yeah, I think the other end is most important to Alice and the campers, you know, to the rec, for the rec program.
And when are they coming down, are we meeting with the Board of Health person?
We'll figure that out, we'll, yeah, Alan will...
Yeah, one last thing that has nothing to do with this, with what we just discussed. As you recall, there were speed bumps on the old library road, I think eight or seven, some number, my grandson used to count them every time. There are no speed bumps on the new road, but the speed limit has been, we've passed the ordinance for a...
Fifteen miles an hour or something? Do we do ten miles?
It's gonna be enforced, ladies and gentlemen, or we'll put speed bumps in.
I thought we agreed we were gonna put a temporary speed from, during the summer, right where the road goes by the pool, we're gonna construct it after Miss Steele, I think it'll be a permanent...
Really?
Yeah, so we can...
Did Barry say he had some at the highway we could use, or, did the highway department have some, or? We'll figure it out.
I'm not sure if we have it, but...
Yeah, another thing, it's more of a rubberized thing, they use it at the boys' camp here. It can be moved or...
It's like a mat, yeah, it's like a, yeah, I think we have some.
I think we have some, okay.
Yeah, but, that's the fire department, not the town. Okay, so those, we know we need those fixes, and can we get those, the fix done to the field and the grassing before summer camp? Is that gonna happen?
We should be able to, we should be able to come anytime, that's right.
We have a whole back-up ceremony?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and we have some contingency money if it isn't. And the water metering, we're still working on? Okay, so that's Phase One. The library signs, the restroom pavilion funding. Let's talk about Phase Two.
Can I just ask one question about Phase One?
Yes.
The Great Lawn. What is happening with the Great Lawn in Phase One? Oh, okay, it's Phase Two.
I think the Great Lawn is in Phase Two, with the field, with the field and with the soccer field and the baseball field, but I believe last year, didn't we give permission for the Soccer League to go ahead and you, and work on the Great Lawn?
Planning Board did, the park committee and the board, I think, we all...
Yeah, we all agreed. So was, did nothing hap, happen, or is that holding, or?
Oh, I think they, yeah.
So...
Is that, you might want to say that, yeah?
Yeah, I have so many questions about that.
Well, I guess what we want to talk about, what's, does anybody here have any comments or questions, 'cause I have a, no, so far? Joe, good. The issue, I think, that we have to sort of discuss and decide on is, we, you know, we have a master plan for this, and we have, the master plan laid out an engineering plan and a plan to develop roadways and parking before the fields were developed, and, is that correct, Sally? We need engineering, drainage, and...
Right, the planning board made it clear that the roadway and parking was all part of Phase Two, connected to the field, so we need to develop.
So we had, we submitted an engineering plan and a parking plan as a condition of our special permit in our, in our site plan review?
I don't know if the term condition was, but I know that that was, I should have read the final approval.
That's okay.
So I'm not sure if it's a technical term there.
Okay, so we know that there are some people who want to develop fields before we do that, and I think that's the crux of why we're here. I mean, to talk about the Great Lawn and to talk about the plan for the park.
When were the plans for Phase Two done, what year?
We submitted it with Phase One.
It's the master plan, it's...
They all, they all submitted at the same time.
January 2009.
No, no, we're talking about the plans, like, what is the planning board?
Oh, okay.
That's not quite true. The planning board, I want to have a date for food, but the planning board...
We think we're 2009?
No, that's when you mentioned...
No, no, it's recent, it's...
I would say more correctly, the master plan is 2009, but then subsequent to that, the committee developed a working development set of drawings that went to the planning board for construction, and those were developed in accordance with the master plan adopted in 2009.
And we probably somewhere near 2014, October, and just for anyone who isn't aware, Phase One, in our approved comprehensive plan and zoning law and our guideline, is vastly different than the second submission done in 2014. But the important thing should be, the infrastructure built up is part of Phase One. Infrastructure is the water, is the parking, is the pavement. So we haven't done a great job at following any kind of real, this is Phase One, so, and I think a lot of the disappointment from a lot of people are, if you can't follow...
You know, I'm gonna ask you to come up, 'cause this is not, this is not...
Richard Murray, the planning board member, and I'm a resident town Rhinebeck. This is a very, very important project for Rhinebeck, and it's, there's just so many people who are excited to see this move forward. But for that to happen, there has to be some consistency. Phase One can't change because somebody mishandles a certain aspect of it, and there's no already money. You know, I sit here and listen to bathrooms and a concession stand, and they're gonna cost $500,000, and I said, well, why do I need a concession stand? It started out as a $250,000 budget by, with volunteers, volunteer time, and it's grown. First and foremost, needs to be parking, so that's an issue, when these people are trying to donate again their time, soccer people, lacrosse people, field hockey people, they're all, they want to donate time just like the people who did the kiosk. Thank you for making sure that those people were noted, because that's awesome. They save money. So here we are, we're sitting here after ten years of trying to put something in place for this park. We need to move forward.
Well, you know what, let's not be disparaging, it's disparaging.
No, no, I'm just saying...
Everybody here, let me just finish. You know, everybody here is, Sally and Bob have been working tirelessly to push this forward, and, you know, we're, it's great that we've gotten as far as we have. We're financial stewards of the town, and you know where we are with tax caps. Next year, we're gonna have $2,000 we can add to our budget.
That's why it's wonderful, that we have so many people willing to donate for free.
And we can't always accept donations.
And material.
We can't always...
So all I want to say is, this project needs to move forward. Tax payers have put hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, let me finish, it's time to let the public use the park, the gardens, the soccer fields, the baseball fields. It's time to let that part of public use the park.
What do you guys, how do you want to, I think what we're getting here is, fields want to be built before we have engineering and parking lots done in Phase Two, is that fair to say? Michael?
Please prepare to talk here, before we get back into the whole fight.
No, there's not gonna be, no fighting tonight, there's no fighting.
I'm Michael DeCola, and the, I just want to correct one thing that we said before. The Soccer League is not the only league that's been working on this. It's been a combination of soccer, lacrosse, and baseball. We all got together as a group and decided that we wanted to help the town and commit to moving forward with the development of that area, which is very clearly laid out in, in the master plan that was submitted around 2009. There have been, there's been an enormous amount of work that's been done, and it's been accomplished mostly by the efforts of the committee, the town, and construction companies and everybody. And we have been very impatient to get to the southern part of the park, and there have been lots of gates we had to get through before we could start to do that. The construction did disturb a little, a big piece of where the fields would be, so we were told it's late, let's not do something there until after this Phase One infrastructure construction was done, 'cause it could interfere with the development of the fields. I think that was probably a rational decision that was made. We're past that now, in the fall, just to give a brief recap of what our effort, more recent efforts have been. In the fall, having seen that that work had been completed, we met with the committee and approached the town formally about making the gift of trying to do some volunteer work and invest some money that the leagues have raised toward field development on this part of the park. And since then, have been working with the committee to develop the plan to move forward with that field. The initial problems that were raised by the committee and by also meeting with members of the, of the planning board and the zoning office... of the, of the planning board and zoning officer, were some of the historical archaeological parts of the, of the, the park has, had some very important archaeological sites in it. So there was an issue of whether SHPO would be concerned or involved with the new work that we were proposing to do to develop these fields. And that was a question. And it gets to the great lawn. So, in the initial meeting that we had with planning board members and members of the committee, the interpretation of SHPO's position on the great lawn was that the soil could not be scrapped. You could only bring in material on top of it. And because it's an old farm field, it goes up and down like this. So to make it something that the sports leagues could use as, as part of a passive recreation use, which is approved in the plan, there would be a lot of work that would need to happen to make that happen. And it would be very expensive and pretty much use up the money that we have to develop the active recreation fields. So, we proposed at that meeting with the committee to approach SHPO with our plan of how we would like to develop the great lawn in a more cost-effective way. That was submitted to SHPO. We got a letter back, which I copied to Bob and to you, which defined a way to do that work that was more cost-effective and would end up with this newer field. And SHPO was fine with it. So that's a real achievement for the moving forward with the great lawn. So we would like to do that work. We would like to combine that with the effort to develop the fields next to it for the active recreation use.
Michael, let me just interrupt you. I don't get the last. The fields do not go on the great lawn or the fields do go on, the athletic fields?
The athletic fields and the great lawn are separate parts of the park. They are, they are contiguous and they meet each other and there's a trail that defines the two. The, the great lawn was approved as part of phase one, so that work could go forward.
I'm just asking, I think Matt is in that.
308.
The, the great lawn is the area that has grass on it now, it's right across the street from where the pool and the tennis courts are. And there's some, that look like birdhouses, but it's actually frisbee golf. And the fields are in the area that was farmed and had corn on it, so it's open now. So if you're familiar with the park, it's, it's pretty clear where those two areas are. The, the, the fields start in the area that's, that's turned up dirt, that used to be farmed and it had corn on it last year. So, we submitted our plan for both the great lawn and the fields to SHPO and the work that we proposed was approved. So there's no, um, SHPO has no problem with the way that we would like to plant the grass on the great lawn. Go on, let's go this way.
Thanks, Tommy.
That's good now.
All right. So, can you kind of, this is the existing, okay, so the great lawn area.
The darker green, Michael.
Is here?
No.
Oh, so we're gonna hear.
No.
This is the library.
Go up, go up, the great, great, in there.
Put the map over.
No, no, this is where, north is up.
Cause this is an old, this is an old drug.
Across the tennis court.
Yeah, this is the basketball.
That's not even our.
It's the great lawn, you should not be on the.
Yeah, but it's not to give you a sense where.
Well, this is the great lawn area, but it's got soccer fields on it right now and that's not.
Yeah, it's the old, it's before we banned that, the archery.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that is a very confusing line. Erase it from your memory.
I've gotta be talking to you in the back.
But that's just suffice that, if you can, if you can picture the park in your mind, the area that has grass on it right now, that's across the, the road that comes in, past the, past the parking lot and the playground, that has grass on it, that's the great lawn area. And the area beyond that, as you go down that road, then it's dirt and they had corn on it last fall.
That's where the fields.
That's where the soccer fields and the baseball fields and the lacrosse field. Okay? The soccer and lacrosse field are the same field.
So Michael, you want the soc, can you just get to the, what are you asking us for?
So, the problem as it's been presented is, there's a planning issue here. And we believe that there should be nothing stopping the development of the turf and grass planting on those fields from proceeding immediately. The turf and the grass will not be playable for at least a year. It needs to develop. In that year time, I am sure that we can all solve the planning issue of.
What you're saying, I'm sorry, you're saying the grass sort of has to be planted and take root for about a year?
It takes, if you, if you grow in a, a grass athletic field, it takes a minimum of a year for the grass to be established enough that you don't ruin it by going out and playing soccer.
Now, let me, let me just, so what about the pavilion in phase one and the parking and the road for any engineering for phase two?
So the, the parking and the road for phase two absolutely needs to go through planning, that's been determined. And that can happen, that planning process can happen contiguous with the work taking place to build the fields. The fields do not interact with the, the, the parking and roads in a way that preclude you from doing that development.
How do you know?
Because we've looked at the drawings and we've had engineers look at the drawings.
Well, okay, but you gotta drain the fields.
Our, our engineers have looked at the?
No, you don't have to drain the fields. And that was one of the things that was discussed at some of the other meetings, was that the fields might need underfield drainage. And I went to, to find out, A, what it would cost to do that, cause if we're, if we're proposing to do the work of the fields, we can know what that would cost.
You're saying that we can not enjoy that.
The fields don't need to be drained underground. The soils there, and we have a soil test that we've.
You can get with the town engineer and convince them it will be fine.
You can look at the soils, we presented, we just got the soils test back, we presented it. A turf specialist has looked at those soils and says that putting drainage underneath that field might be the worst thing that we could do to make it a soccer field. The soils there.
Who's proposing to put drainage under the field?
We never would.
They, what?
There was a question of whether it was required.
Weston and Samson.
Weston and Samson.
Okay.
Yeah, now.
Hold on, wait, wait. Weston and Samson said it might be needed. They haven't said it need, we definitely need it, we might need it.
Well, I think they said it was needed.
I don't know if they did the soils test that we did.
Whether you did it or not, it's something the town will have to do as a matter of course, you know.
Sure, you should definitely have, you should have the engineer who's working on this look at it. The, the, the report that we got back after looking at a detailed analysis of the actual soil on the site, was that drainage in that soil is not an issue. What's gonna be an issue is keeping the roots wet. So if we're gonna spend money on that field, irrigation would be the way to go, not drainage. And we have an irrigation proposal for you guys to look at, but it is not, you do not want to put drainage underneath that field. It will exacerbate a soils problem.
Okay, well, let, let, so you're asking for fields to be developed before the infrastructure for phase two goes in, before parking lots and before, and the engineering may need, need to change based on our soil test?
None of the engineering for the roads or parking would need to be changed based on our soil.
Drainage engineering.
None of the drainage engineering for the park, for the road and parking, none of that is connected to the fields. It is independent. It has its own dispersal area, it is not tied into the field, except if you wanted to drain the field, you would tie it into that.
Okay, wait.
So all you have to do is convince the town engineer that that's the case and we're fine.
Yeah, we try.
Is that, let's talk about finances here. Are we committed to, who's gonna take care of these fields?
Well, who's gonna pay for the construction of it?
I'd appreciate if you could let Michael finish.
No, hold on, we're, we're, it's our meeting, it's a workshop for us to get information that we need. No, 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 this is a town board workshop, for us to get information that we need to proceed.
Who's gonna pay for the construction?
The soccer league would like to build the fields. That's what we, that's what we propose.
So then, and you realize that these are town fields that would not belong to the soccer league, and then, let me finish, that all scheduling would go through our rec department?
We already do that with Stone Church. We have a working agreement with the town rec department.
It's just, it's just a statement, they're towns.
And you're absolutely happy with that arrangement.
And it's not just the soccer league again, but with that joint.
Yeah, it's, it would be all, all, listen, it's not, it's not just the leagues that are, that are offering to build. The town recreation department can list anybody in the town.
So what do we, what do we need to do here, Alan? We need to figure out if.
Well, if, if what is being said is accurate and acceptable to the town engineer, I'm fine. The next question is, what's it gonna cost to maintain it? How much is the water bill gonna be every year?
Yeah, I have, what I've submitted to you, Elizabeth, I emailed you copies on all these proposals today. We have an estimate, if what irrigation did go in, there's an estimate for water use, there's an estimate for the monthly, for the yearly maintenance of blowing it out and for spending five minutes at least looking at the, to make sure it's all working. All that is in, is in the irrigation proposals that we have. So you have all those numbers?
How, Sally?
I believe as far as, if we're gonna get into the cost discussion, that would be great. I think that the soccer league and the, and the lacrosse league and the baseball league would love to be able to partner with the town to make some of that work, but that to me, given where we're stuck right now, is putting the cart before the horse. I know it's a concern you have, but we've been, we've been in this holding pattern of moving forward on this for, for some very good reasons, but also now that needs to break up.
Well, this, this is the biggest municipal project that this town has done. And, you know, we're, it's being done by volunteers who work really hard. It's being done as inexpensively as possible because, you know, we run the town, we're thrifty, as I like to say.
Love to help you with that.
Yeah. Sally, how does this fit into our master plan for phase two?
Well, it does fit in. The fields are part of phase two. And what Bob and the committee has suggested to Michael is that the engineers that you're talking to, and our engineers, we sit down together and listen and have them go back and forth and figure out what, if, if we don't need drainage, why put the drainage in? But I think we need agreement and then the town board to decide after the two groups talk about it. And I think that we need professionals. I can't make that decision, Bob can't make that decision, nor can you, Michael.
Well, that's why we went and got the, the consultants.
Okay, but we want, but we have a difference of opinion of the professionals. So let's put them in the room and discuss it and so everybody's talking about the same thing and come up with a decision. I think it'd be great if we didn't have to do the engineering.
So could, and so, would we be able to put these fields in before we put the road in the parking?
Well, I think that's a planning board issue. The planning board feels that once the fields are being used, we need the roadway and we need the parking.
But if, if it does take a year to get the turf building.
Can we raise the money in that year and then you need the time to also build it?
Well.
To relocate the parking.
Okay, but it's.
Excuse me, if we do proceed the fields and they are ready to be used and there is no parking, all we have to do is not schedule the use of the fields?
That's right. We don't lose anything by moving forward with, 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 with doing the field work. We do not lose a single thing, as long as we can get the engineers to, to agree.
I think we need engineers to agree.
So let's say we.
And I, I think I'll disagree with you, Alan, that if the fields are there, you just put a chain for us, you're gonna have a community looking at those fields and drooling, saying you're crazy.
The parking is for, the parking is designed for organized sporting events on an active recreation field. And that can't happen without scheduling them throughout. If Alice does not give the leagues permission to use those fields, you will not get a soccer game or a lacrosse game or a baseball game that has 30 families driving in and needing parking. You will get incidental park abuse, which you get every day, anyone. It's not, what we're talking about, the parking and the roadway design is for a level of use that is commensurate with a very, you know, a serious amount of sports fields.
Let me, let me ask something crazy here. Are we talking about, hold on, putting in a soccer field and two baseball fields or what are we talking about there now?
The, the, we're talking about tilling and seeding, leveling the great lawn, leveling the soccer field, if we can raise the money and we get permission to put in irrigation, if you guys are agree, agree that that's the way to go. And, and seeding the baseball outfield.
Now, and we're still, I know because this is flexible depending on what the community wants, are we still in agreement that we're putting in one soccer field and two baseball fields in addition to the great lawn?
That's what's in the plan. It is, it would be ludicrous for me to say anything other than what's in the plan at this point.
But there's flexibility there, there always has been.
Well, I've got a lot of contractions about this one. I, I think, I think there should be flexibility, but let's not open that Pandora's box here.
Okay, but, but what you're talking about is seeding and developing the soccer field and the two baseball fields before the roadway and parking go in for phase two?
That's right. And, and, and the, look, it's gonna take a while to do that.
Yeah, I got it, got it.
And there's a lot of time to solve all the planning questions.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, so, I mean, when all is said and done, all you're gonna do is have some flat fields that have grass on it.
And maybe irrigation, but.
I just wanna make sure.
Sally, and it'll solve, it'll solve Alice's problem of not having a place for the kids to play. After a year, if we don't get approval for the parking.
Oh, wait a moment. Sally, you said something about raising money for the parking and the roadway.
And the roadway.
Yeah, how's that gonna be accomplished?
Well, it's gonna have to be accomplished with a capital campaign. I keep talking about this, but until the town board makes a final decision as to us moving ahead on things, we're not gonna raise any money, so.
Do we have an est.
I'm just as anxious as Michael to say, this is what we're going to do.
Now, do we have any estimate? I know we spent around $800,000 on roads, but that had a ton of money in it for bringing in infrastructure.
Yeah, my opinion is that it has to be less than that because you don't have.
The electric, the water, the, yeah.
And it's gravel parking, it's not the same, it's not the same blacktop.
It's not blacktop.
Yeah.
So a couple of hundred thou, you know.
No, it's more than a couple of hundred thousand.
Since I'm standing in front of the mic and I haven't sat down yet, I believe it will be a lot easier to raise that money if there are beautiful green fields sitting there waiting for people to play on. I think it's an incentive to the community to get behind that capital campaign.
Yeah, we agree, we agree.
Let it out here.
Sally, is the money competing with the money for phase two? In that, you know, if we're asking the state why?
Joe, here's a, here's what we sent out, I can make copies for you. That's a.
I don't know, what is this again?
This is a letter that we sent to Ann Saylor in December showing where the money would come for, for the pavilion. It's $100,000 in a community block development grant for ADA bathrooms.
That's not my question.
Well, it, it just shows you what you're asking about. You just asked Sally if that funding competes with the fields. Hold on, Michael, we're.
Well, not the field, but the infrastructure for phase two.
I don't think so, I think this is ADA specific, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
$160,000 from the.
Not the $160,000. $160,000 is specific for the restrooms, the handicap restrooms and.
But I understand the county has given us $100,000, which is tied to accessible restrooms.
Right.
The question is, the money that we're applying for the state, is that also tied specifically or could that have been?
It is specific for the restrooms.
So that couldn't be used, instead of applying for the restrooms, could it have been an application for phase two?
That's not what was asked of you, Joe, we've been trying to get phase one completed.
So this money is specific for the pavilion?
So this money is specific for the pavilions, it couldn't be switched over?
Before we move on to bathrooms, I just, I wanted to recap one thing, which is, what we're really asking for is that a decision be made and that we move forward. We have tried a number of times to get in touch with Aaron and to present plans to him.
Well, that, that-
And that has, and that has not happened.
Because he, he bills us for that.
We volunteered to pay for the time to meet with him. There was a question of whether it was a conflict of interest. What needs to happen now, is that, yeah, what needs to happen now is that meeting needs to happen, and it needs to happen soon, so this work can start.
Okay, well, I think Sally brought it up, a meeting of the minds with your engineer and our engineer, I, I would support that, especially if the-
We've been trying since October.
Okay, well, we're talking about it now.
Let's do it, let's do it soon.
I've spent many hours of my time helping, volunteering my time, and I personally, along with the soccer league, along with the other few people, have, have made a commitment in October to the committee that we would pay for that.
Okay, well, we're hearing about it now.
The committee won't respond because we feel that he's, he feels in conflict, helping someone who he feels is doing something counter to the way-
Wait, wait, like, the way that conflict can be resolved, because you are his client.
Please say we'd like for you to do this.
Absolutely.
Then, I mean, we're-
Well, that's what we said from the beginning, it has to come from the town.
That's why I'm back up, that's why I'm back up here, because I want to-
But Mike suggests-
Hold on, stop, stop, no, 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 okay.
We're in violent agreement.
Stop, yes.
I would like a commitment from you guys to contact Aaron and tell him that there is no conflict for his to sit down with us, and we go forward with that soon.
But he's not sitting down with you, he's sitting down with you and the town to get-
Yeah, 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 I want everybody there, I want all the plan makers there.
We were very patient and willing to pay, I left him numerous messages and emails. In lieu of that, due to the lack of response, we proceeded to consult with other people.
Well, you know, I've got to say, I think he did the right thing by not responding because it didn't come from the town board. I mean, we've refused to pay bills in the past when other people have contacted our-
The community who represents the board, instruction us.
Let me finish, okay, well, we, they don't have the power to spend the money, we do.
They should have asked before, and let's not move back-
Okay, all right, all right, this is counterproductive. As Alan said, we're in violent agreement, it sounds like a great idea. You guys have agreed to pay for our engineer to sit down and look at these, that sounds like a great idea to me and a very generous gift, so thank you.
Thank you.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah, and the second, I guess the second thing that has to happen is that the planning board has got to agree to go along with the, with the two phases of Phase Two on this field.
I mean, I don't, yeah, I think we have to develop that plan and then bring it to them.
Plan, we've got to plan the fields and then work on the parking lots.
Why, why does the planning board need to be involved?
Because it's a town project that gets-
We approved the great lawn already, and-
All right, well, we'll, we'll go through the process.
Well, to answer your question, we gave blessing for attempts to go in and move that out and turn it into a great-
What about the, the, the fields, the playing fields?
Yeah, those, just soccer fields and the great lawn.
So the planning board's fine with-
The planning board never gave approval for the soccer league and baseball field, and the great lawn.
Okay, everybody, please, please stop, stop, stop. Richard, stop, stop, stop this from the audience, please, it's not, it's not helping.
Have we gotten approval from the planning board for the fields to be seeded, all the fields?
No.
Why don't we finish without doing the parking lots?
No, we don't.
So we can go to them, we can ask for it.
We need to go to them and say, "Look, we're going to, we're going to seed the fields, we're not going to use them for a year." Wait, stop.
No, 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 Michael, we're good.
I guess I'm, I'm dumbfounded with why we need any approval from the planning board to seed a lawn.
Because you're going to grade, and you're going to have an engineering plan that says we're going to use natural, pardon me?
No, it's not, you're not grading, they're, they're filling, and they're everything down.
And you're going to-
I'm sorry, we're not actually building.
I, I helped to move this forward.
No, well, I'll move it forward, thank you.
I would like to hear from the planning board, period.
What we, what we are, what we are in agreement on doing here is having, sitting down with you guys, with our engineer, and whatever engineer you want to buy, and accepting your donation and paying for our engineer, and looking to see if we can alter the plan. And then we will bring it to the planning board, and whoever we need to bring it to, to push forward whatever plan we develop, because we won't, we will go to the planning board.
Please, please note, town board, that we did exactly that last October with the town board, the planning board, and engineering. And since then, we've continuously discussed and prepared, tested, consulted, so we feel like we've exhausted ourselves preparing for this month.
Okay, well, this is the first time we're talking about it publicly and as a town board that we're listening to it. So this is how we do it. We do it, it's the town board who does it, and this is what we're doing.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have a clue as to whether we have to go to the planning board or not.
They'll tell us, yeah.
Anybody will tell us that. I understand we have one member of the planning board, but as you know, a collective decision.
Well, you should need to read a very short presentation at the planning board, or not.
The fields need to get a cover crop on.
I'm saying, they need what?
They, the fields need to be planted, not just for soccer, but for lots of reasons that include stormwater management. So there's a real incentive to move forward with this, and not have to tear up whatever stormwater grass and plant to replant soccer fields.
Sure.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't, the only problem is we get to this point to where we have-
Well, here, we're, we're, we're doing it.
When's the next planning board meeting? When's the next planning board meeting?
It's in, it's every other mon, it's the next Monday. But I think what we need to do is contact Aaron and set a date. Alan, will you do this, will you?
I'll call.
How many, we want to set a date and we'll accept your donation to pay for them, and we'll sit down-
Up to two hours.
Okay. Now it ends.
Come on, I know I can solve this.
Yeah, I'll call Aaron, Michael, I'll call you and tell you when, when he can be far.
Now, who else is coming to this meeting? It's, it's the park committee, I'd like to be there if we, if any other board, we can certainly notice it, and we could do it at our next town board meeting.
Doesn't it make sense that the two engineers talk among themselves before you drag in while I'm taking off?
There's been too much, because then you're going to have both the park committee and the group that's been working. I think we all, we need consensus.
We need to-
Sit down and all hear the same.
Okay, well, as the supervisor, I can form a subcommittee, and I'd like to do that. So I would like to be on, would anyone else from the town board like to be on a subcommittee? Alan should be on it.
I'll be there.
The Thompson Mazzarella Park, Michael, whoever you want to bring from the sports people.
We also need to bring Greg Jarvis, who's-
Your soil engineer and our engineer.
Yeah, what's, what's your number, Martin?
I, I have it, I can give it to you, I'll email it to you. Call me all the time, soccer field.
For a good time, I'm sure, all complimenting you.
That's Michael.
I'm going to put it in the men's room.
All right, so, sounds good, we can alter the plan and figure out, you know, where we are with the pavilion or not with the pavilion. So this is, this is independent of the pavilion plan, because money we've requested could not be moved to that. I understand some people may not agree with it. I think we're going ahead, or we'll decide when we get to the funding issue, but we're certainly proceeding with all of the funding that we've asked for this, and extending the community block development ADA grant. So this is independent of Phase Two and putting in the fields. So we'll keep that going while we're looking at altering the plan for getting the fields in ASAP before roadways and parking, and looking at the issue of engineering and infrastructure for water irrigation. Sounds like a plan.
You guys have, you have all those proposals and all the soil tests now, this Emma, this Chippewa have all been sent, you really need all those now.
I put them in a folder in my email, got thousands of things, thousands.
Did you forward the need to?
I'll let, I'll let her know. Copy here, your party.
I mean, I think everybody wants the same thing, and, you know, we'll, we'll work to alter our, our plan and get the fields in so, sooner rather than later. Is there anything else, any other, Alice?
Yeah, I live to the moment, okay? And the moment is I have this goal, that I have cages that were taken down for the Phase One. With Bobby's assistance, I would just like to put more of them going on to the left-hand side, so the community people that do play have access to it. We have it, and I think-
Do we have a couple of cages stolen for the bad-
I found one in the back room, that was never put up, so I believe we're down one.
We're down one, and they lived-
We could do it with eight right now.
They lived just south of the community garden, sort of, and are they going back in the same area?
They're go, no, they're going to go down, past the community garden, and then work to the left-hand side.
To the, to the newly graded area?
Yes.
Oh, good.
That's up the grid.
No, to the left-hand side.
Behind the, where the, where the roadway is, and then, yeah, nice.
And then through there, and then to the left.
Be great to have people using that field.
I, I just think that's what needs to be done right now, we're not using it.
Go for it, Alice.
I'm doing it.
Do it. Just doing it.
It's in the moment.
Just go.
Just go, it's great.
All right, does that sort of address everybody's need here tonight? Is that, yes, no? What? Okay, well, I mean, I think that was positive, I think, does anybody else want to comment on this, fields, pavilions?
I have a question.
Could you come up and?
Hey, Nick, kind of heart, concerned parent who uses the red park a good amount with kids, et cetera, task force, as well as fields when they eventually get built. I've never seen the master plan, it's my first meeting, I'm just curious, how many, there's a baseball field there now, and there's going to be two additional baseball fields? So it'll be three baseball fields, and one field to be shared with soccer and lacrosse. And I know the master plan was done here tonight in 2009, and I don't know how population numbers have changed in terms of what's, what's the sport, but I do know that Ryan Beck Little League has had to combine with Red Hook because of a smaller interest in the sport. So sitting here, listening to all this, I'm sort of wondering, you know, in the time it's taken to get to this point, does it serve us to take a look at actually how that real estate is being signed, considering how the population is playing and what is projected?
Thanks, that's a good point. I mean, I think we asked that, I think we were told that there isn't a lot of flexibility, but I would be willing to open it back up, you know, it seems to be kind of explosive, but it may need to be looked at.
And they all use flat fields.
Yeah, I mean, a field is a field until it's, it's built, but, yeah, I mean, we may have to look at this as-
Well, we should hear from the baseball people.
Yeah, we, we invited them, and-
He's Thompson.
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, oh.
Yeah, okay, well, I mean, it's something we should talk about, we have to look at these numbers, absolutely, you know?
So I assume we'll get something in writing from this, from the engineers as to the issue of drainage, that, I think we should get it written in writing.
Yes, we'll ask for it in writing, and I'll, we'll get an estimate of the time to do this, and get sign off from you guys, and, and look at our, you know, I think it's a good idea. Anybody else, any other comments about fields, park, dog walkers, gardeners, library people, soccer, tennis? Hi, Roger.
I'm actually not going to talk about soccer. So as a new dog owner, new to the park for town, is there a space in that park that could be used for, specifically for running or training dogs in an enclosure?
No, we have a park, we have a closed dog park at our Stone Church Field in the town of Red Hook, the Joint Dog Park, and that's where they can run free. And as a dog owner, I would just like to remind everybody, please pick up after your dogs, because we've had an issue there, and it's getting critical, critical issue.
They have the leash.
Next goats, Mr. Gredo.
Do goats ever be on leash?
Yes, goats on leashes.
I'm not speaking as a sports model or anything else at this point, I'm speaking as a horticulturist, and it's, and I just want to reiterate what Michael has said, that these fields need time, and much better than one year, or you won't have any fields left. And if you're putting money into these fields, I think you really should consider the irrigation, because otherwise, they won't make it. So you need to put the maintenance in regardless of who builds these fields, it has to be done, I think.
Thanks, Meg.
The town board should recognize Meg for the important work she's done with us and her expertise in all the tree planting and selection, and they're very, very grateful to her.
Very grateful for Meg's expertise and generous volunteerism. Sally, okay, so we'll proceed with this engineering, and we have to deal with the issue of looking at more soccer fields versus less baseball fields. And is there anything else?
Or greater lawn.
And, and the great lawn. Hey, any other public comment or issues? Do we have to go into an executive session tonight? No? No, I'd like to, any other issues from anybody new business? If not, I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss union negotiations and a personnel shift. May I have a second? To discuss the hiring of a potential person. You're welcome. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks, we'll be back.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.